I'm going to call to order this Lacey City Council meeting on August 23rd, 2018. Can everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started on tonight's agenda and before I get a motion to approve today's agenda and consent agenda items, and I think Councilmember Hearn wants to talk about something like that as well, but before we do this, I'd just like to take a quick moment of silence. Today, we lost Steve Romines, who's a longtime member of this community, is from the EMS and Medic One Director. He lost his battle with cancer earlier today. And so, can you please keep that in mind for a moment of silence and also keep everyone on the East Coast in mind as the hurricane's hitting? So, just a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Councilmember Hearn?
I just had a comment period regarding a consent agenda item during the vote for the agenda, that's all.
Okay. Given that, can I get a motion to approve the agenda and consent agenda items?
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, the records show accurately about the last, our last council meeting, how I proposed an alternative flag policy to the one that was approved, but I'd like it to reflect that a copy of that was submitted for the record, please.
Great. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. We had some discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. We have an agenda. First up on our agenda is public recognitions and presentations. The Washington City County Managers Association has a presentation. Can John please come up?
Good evening, Mayor Ryder and councilmembers. Thanks for the opportunity to be here this evening. Again, my name is John Caulfield. I'm the Lakewood City Manager, as well as one of the many past presidents of the Washington City County Management Association, or WCMA. And I'm here this evening to bestow an honor upon you. We want to recognize you with the Innovation in Local Government Award for the Lacey Veterans Services Hub. And I think, as you know, Thurston County as a whole is home to nearly 32,000 veterans, and here in Lacey, there's over 6,000 veterans. These former military members face many difficulties on a day-to-day basis, you know, whether it's poverty, or homelessness, service-related disabilities, mental health care, PTSD, things along those lines. The fact of the matter is, is that your city saw and recognized these challenges and asked, you know, why veterans were not accessing these earned services. You recognize that available benefits were spread out over a number of areas, and that there wasn't a central location, one-stop shopping, so to speak, for folks to be able to come to access those services. And I know you know this narrative quite well, but I think at the same time, I'd just like to cover some of the background in terms of why WCMA felt it was so important to recognize you for this. In 2012, the city approached the Veterans Affairs, the VA, to act as a central location for a number of veteran service organizations. The result of that was the VA provided you all with a trailer to provide some, you know, mental health care services. However, you quickly learned that the services was quite enormous, and that there was a need for a larger location, a larger footprint. And while the VA wasn't able to, you know, provide additional resources at that time, you all stepped up and took a strong leadership role in figuring out the next steps. In 2014, you approached and partnered with the Lacey campus of the South Puget Sound Community College about a permanent space. The city started leasing a 1,200-square-foot office space for the council, for counseling, from the college, for counseling and support services. This is the space that very quickly became known as the Veteran Services Hub, or as it's known today, the Hub. And it quickly became a central location for all of these service organizations. Less than two years later, you added an additional 3,225 square feet. Today, the Hub provides veterans with access to nearly 40 different organizations, providing all kinds of valuable services. And the Hub is based on five pillars of support: employment, education, housing, nutrition, and healthcare. And in the past year alone, the Hub has provided over 5,000 client appointments, including 775 for affordable housing, over 1,900 for mental health, 415 for employment assistance, and 269 veterans for homeless aid. The city has provided 90,000, originally provided $90,000 in seed money for the first year of operations at the college, plus an additional $225,000 the past two years. In addition, Thurston County has stepped up and partnered with you and provided $60,000 the past couple of years. The facility itself is a very, very lean organization with only one paid employee and a multitude and cadre of volunteers. Those outstanding volunteers have donated more than 4,500 service hours, with an estimated market value exceeding $135,000. But at the end of the day, by identifying a problem affecting a large portion of our community's veterans, the City of Lacey has created a service model that can be used for other cities all around this country. You stand out above and beyond. This is yet another way that the City of Lacey continues to lead the way in helping and supporting our veterans. And in closing, I want to congratulate you for what you've done and recognize for what you've done. And because of that, and on behalf of WCMA, it is my honor and pleasure to be able to present to you this Innovations in Local Government Award.
So, normally, I would come up and accept this award, but in recognizing that we couldn't have done this without our amazing staff here at the City of Lacey, and really the support from our city manager, can you please come up and accept that award on behalf of this council? Steve Scott?
Yeah, put him on the spot.
Put him on the spot, yeah.
You know, again, this is, I think, a fundamental role of what local government is. You identify a problem, you marshal the resources and the leadership and actually solve the problem, and actually be recognized by your peers, which is, I'm part of the Washington City County Managers Association, is a very high honor. And again, I think this is exemplary of what local government needs to do and should do. So, thank you very much. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I want to thank you for that call, having Scott receive that. I remember a few years ago, you know, there was that need, but there was also a short opportunity to really bring the parties together and also kind of organize and capture some funding, and lots of things are coming in, and there's really a kind of a short time to really jump on it, and Scott did that. He jumped right on it, and really appreciate that leadership. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for letting Scott receive that.
Of course. So, next up on our agenda is Public Comments Not on Our Agenda, and we do have one person who signed up. Shawna, come up.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Shawna Stewart, and I'm the CEO of Experience Olympian Beyond, Thurston County's Visitor and Convention Bureau. And in keeping with the theme of recognizing Lacey's leadership tonight, I'm here to thank you. As you may know, the Visitor and Convention Bureau recently received our accreditation by Destinations International. This is the industry's essentially highest stamp of approval for excellence in our industry, and it ranks. Thank you. They measure about 93 different points from gut board governance, financial policies, human resources, sales, marketing, communications, innovation, budgeting. It goes, the list goes on and on and on and on, and it could not have been possible without you. I especially want to thank councilmembers Hearn, Greenstein, and Stedman for the last three years. You guys have been a big part of our board and being a big part of this process and of this key accomplishment. And it's because of you guys and how engaged and active you were in our board and into a lot of the policies, procedures, and processes that we've been developing over the last few years that this accomplishment was possible. So, I just really want to say thank you to all of you, and especially to those who really put in the extra hard work, hours, labor, and I just really sincerely appreciate it. So, thank you very much, and thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to address this council on any items not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll go on to our next agenda item, which is a referral from the Planning Commission, the Ordinance 1053 for Development Guidelines and Public Work Standards related to annexation requirements. Jessica?
Good evening, Mayor, council. This item is a recommendation to do two things. First, to adopt a resolution, to modify Resolution 510 regarding extension of the city's utility system, and second, adopt an ordinance to amend Section 3.135 of the City of Lacey Development Guidelines and Public Work Standards related to annexation requirements regarding utility connections. Our current guidelines say that property outside of but contiguous to city limits must apply for annexation before being served by a city-owned utility, and property not contiguous must legally commit their property to eventual annexations prior to being served by utility. And in February, the council directed staff to take this issue to the Planning Commission for further review regarding a possibly stricter standard. So, let's look at the options we considered and discussed since this spring. This here is kind of a spectrum of looser annexation requirements to more strict annexation requirements, and I'll show you where we are right now. That's our current policy, and it's you can get a connection while in the process of annexation. So, in May, we began working with the Planning Commission on drafting proposed amendments that followed a stricter approach, where all properties must annex before utility connection, regardless of location in the UGA. And that's on this end, right here. And that's kind of where we started with this spring. And so, we drafted up some language. We did extensive outreach. I mean, we talked with the Olympia Master Builders, Chambers of Commerce, and their members, and we really engaged all the stakeholders we possibly could in talking about what that text amendment might mean to them. And we heard a lot of concerns during outreach and at the public hearing, and a lot of people showed up and provided testimony in writing and in person. And the development community was really mostly concerned with unpredictability of being able to annex under that very strict approach. And so, we proposed that the public hearing was something a little less strict than that initial take on it, and they still had some concerns, and they definitely voiced those to us. And so, the Planning Commission ultimately landed a little bit farther over to that end, a little stricter than where we are now, but not quite at the far end that was originally thought about back in February. And so, they took that into consideration. They think they landed on an option that took into account all the public comments we received, and they suggested that approach. And I'm going to show you the actual language we have proposed right here. It's a slight change. It changed from "must apply for" to "shall be annexed." So, it essentially went from simply "you must apply for annexation" to "you must apply for annexation and complete that process before utility connection." So, contiguous properties would complete the annexation process prior to utility connection, and those properties contiguous to city limits in the UGA would still continue to sign those power of attorney agreements, which have always been in our guidelines all along. We added a public health emergency exemption in there, not because we weren't dealing with those issues, but it was really clear during the outreach process. It was suggested by a few people just to make that more clear, so we included that. So, in summary, we did a lot of outreach, we engaged a lot of people, gathered concerns, and I think came to an acceptable outcome that the Planning Commission's recommending. So, we recommend you adopt both the Resolution modifying Resolution 510 regarding utility extension, and also an ordinance that would amend Section 3.135 of the Development Guidelines and Public Work Standards. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Can I get a motion?
Move to approve, move to adopt a resolution to modify Resolution 510 regarding extension of the city's utility system, and adopt an ordinance to amend Section 3.135 of the City of Lacey Development Guidelines and Public Work Standards related to annexation requirements related to utility connections.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Some discussion. Councilmember Hearn?
Yeah, this is a big policy regarding, I mean, the City of Lacey, and I noticed there's some pretty clear and extensive letters from key landowners and developers in the area. And so, I kind of, I follow the road here through all of this. Appreciate all the reach-out, because it created a lot of dialogue, but I think that the choice, recommended choice here is satisfying to those stakeholders. Could you expound on that, please?
They feel like there's more predictability, and I think in particular, there was concerns about those properties on Martin Way. So, if you're not directly next to city limits and you're kind of in between there, they felt like if they had to wait to get utilities for annexation, it just, it felt so unpredictable to them. They would have to wait for their neighbors to make their way over to their property, and that just caused a lot of concern, so we thought this was a good compromise.
And were they able to be involved in that conversation so that if they were to write a letter today, that those concerns would be appeased?
I think so. Absolutely.
So, this is just basically saying they all have to sign the power of attorney from the get-go in those circumstances, right?
But if they are continuous to the city, then they have to do it.
Right.
Yeah. And what type of timeframe will this add to a typical project, you know?
I mean, parcel by parcel, if it's a smaller project, it'd probably be a few months. And so, I think with that predictability that's built in, people will just initially say, okay, I'm going to do a project, I'm going to start off with the annexation process. You can simultaneously do it with the land use application, but they would probably start the annexation process first, knowing that this needs to get done before utilities.
And is there any way for us to streamline that if they're in that circumstance? Because it's a little bit of a different situation, right?
I think we've talked about this, that the BRB was not in that role that would streamline the process.
Oh, yeah. The BRB is in that.
So, sometimes it will take up to six to nine months, but because council may take an action, BRB then could assume jurisdiction if they chose to do so, and that's what elongates the process.
Just a quick comment, Mr. Mayor. I think this is very logical, and it'll alleviate a lot of stress and worry for people not knowing where they stand.
Well, I think we're here for a reason, right? I mean, we're here because we've seen how difficult it is for annexation process and the unpredictability it can have on the city when you don't have clear guidelines where you extend services, and unless you're going through a specific process, trying to get them to annex later is very, very difficult. We've seen this, you know, throughout our UGA. So, I know we had to do something. I think this is a very good compromise, and I'm glad we're taking this step, so. Councilmember?
I might, I would just like to commend the Planning Commission for the work that they put in on this. I know that you all put considerable time and thought into it. You waited through the comments, and you were kind of given a tough challenge on this thing. So, thank you, and please, David, if you will, share that with the board.
Yeah. Obviously, I'd like to recognize Dave from our planning commissions here. Thanks for participating here, Dave. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. We had some discussion. All in favor of the motion to adopt the resolution to modify Resolution 510 regarding the extension of the city utility system, and to adopt an ordinance to amend Section 3.135 of the City of Lacey Development Guidelines and Public Work Standards related to annexation requirements related to utility connections. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. So, next up is resolutions. First is the Resolution 1067 for the interlocal agreement approval process.
So, Honorable Mayor and City Council, before you is a resolution related to intergovernmental agreement and a streamlined process policy. This was taken to general government, but the idea behind it, state law requires anytime there is a service between governments, you have to have an interlocal agreement, and that agreement has to be approved by the legislative body, i.e., this would be a city council. But there are times when you could classify someone's agreement as routine, where there are no costs to the city, but it's an essential part of what we need to do, such as maybe running license plates, which you'll see later tonight. So, the idea was, and what was discussed and directed by the general government, was to classify interlocal agreements as either routine, which would be any interlocal agreement that was $25,000 or less. That could be signed by the city manager alone and then be reported out at a subsequent city council meeting, so council was aware of what was being signed between other governments. Counter to that, if it's considered significant or new, that would go through the normal process, would go through the respective council committee, and then go to city council for approval. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions on that. General government looked at this twice, once in May, well, actually, three times, May, July, and August, and recommended approval to the full council.
Can I get a motion, please?
Sure. I move to approve and adopt a resolution creating an interlocal agreement approval process for the City of Lacey.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Coming from general government, yeah, we discussed this quite a bit, and we brought this up about efficient government here in Lacey. There's so many times where we've gone through, year after year, approving these interlocal agreements, and it's just like, this is crazy. We have to do these anyway, and if it's a small enough cost. We kind of went back and forth on, you know, the reporting out. We decided we should at least be notified when a new interlocal agreement is signed, but it shouldn't hold up the process. And so, that's how we, that's why we came back and discussed this several times with general government, and that's how we ended up on this approval process.
I would just add, there are several things on the report tonight from general government that we wouldn't be spending time on, because they would have gone through this process.
Exactly.
And they're, I mean, they really are everyday, mundane kind of things that don't need the extra attention. I mean, it's the continuation of something we've been doing for years in most cases.
Yep. Agree. Councilman?
I second your point. I was getting real nervous about this, and then I read into it where the city manager notifies the council about the action, so then I calmed down. So, thanks.
Yeah, we went back and forth on that a little bit, so it's good. Anyway.
I appreciate the trouble.
We just want to know what's going on.
Yeah, yeah, just being informed there. So, it's been moved and seconded to adopt this resolution creating an interlocal agreement approval process for the City of Lacey. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Next up is Resolution 1068, designating TRPC as the lead entity for WIREA.
So, I'm going to take this one, too. So, for members of the audience and those at home, the thousands of people watching at home, WIREA is a water resources inventory area, and the state legislature set those up back in the late 90s, and the essential role really was to focus on salmon recovery. It just so happens that the Thurston Conservation District is no longer able to fulfill that role. Council was aware of that. Council endorsed a letter from the City of Lacey asking if the Thurston Regional Planning Council would assume that role. If we do not have a lead entity, then we, this region is in jeopardy of losing any salmon recovery grants, and so that's why there was an elevated concern. Thurston Regional Planning Commission has agreed to assume that role, to fulfill, or at least to recognize that TRPC is the lead entity. We need to pass a resolution by the participating members of the WIREA, which in this case is WIREA 13. Again, for the benefit of folks here at home, the WIREA stakeholders are Thurston County, Squawson Island Tribe, the cities of Lacey, Olympia, Tumwater, the Department of Fish and Wildlife, and Department of Ecology, and the Puget Sound Partnership. And so, if council passes a resolution, that would designate TRPC as the lead entity. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I just really would like to thank the mayor of Tumwater, Pete Komet. He's the one that really stepped up. We were, they were really in the process of losing this grant funding, which is, I think last year was 875,000, something along those lines. And I think this council's been aware of sort of the issues going on at the Thurston Conservation District, who had this responsibility in the past, but couldn't, were unable to perform the duties going forward. It makes sense that Thurston Regional Planning Council can take this on, which is really all they're doing, is sort of the pass-through for them. They will be going out, and I think as soon as this gets done, they'll be posting this, and we'll hire a person, a coordinator for this, and they will be the lead entity going forward. So, I really appreciate TRPC for stepping up and doing this for our region. I think it's right in their wheelhouse, and I think it was prudent of Mayor Komet to point this out. So, I just would like to thank him, and with that, I'll make the motion to approve and adopt the resolution designating the Thurston Regional Planning Council as the lead entity for the Water Resource Inventory Area 13. Can I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion.
I just want to add, before discussion, WIREA 13 includes the Deschutes River watershed area, just in case, from a geographical, what we're focusing on.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. And now, we're on to ordinances. The 2018 Budget Amendment Ordinance, 1531.
Troy? Thank you, Mayor Ryder. Good evening, council. Tonight, for your consideration, is an ordinance that will amend the 2018 budget. For efficiency's sake, we take all of our amendments to the year and gather them for one motion per year, but to make sure we maintain the integrity of the budget, as well as perform and provide timely information to the council, we report out to the Finance Committee, which therefore reports out to the full council. We did that no less than three times this year. You do have a detailed list of every single amendment being proposed in Exhibit A. The staff report includes explanation on the significant amendments, and we define significant as more than 50,000. I'd like to highlight a few of the more significant items within the staff report. The amendment does include professional services amendments for both the contracts for, related to the Metropolitan Park District in terms of the survey, as well as the indoor sports facility. You do have $200,000 in the arterial street fund. That's for the emergency repair of Hogan Bay Road. I do know that we believe this is going to come in more like 160,000 versus a 200, but we are suggesting 200,000. There is a $500,000 placeholder for the Veterans Affairs, Lacey Outstation Veterans Center. Potential project, we did issue or submit a proposal for the RIP for that, so we do want to make sure we have the dollars in place in case we're awarded that. You do have a number of amendments related to utility capital, both in terms of lift station projects, Hawks Prairie Source 31 for the sanding issue, as well as a stormwater project down on 33rd and Stikes. There's also a budget amendment in here for the Department of Ecology grant that was awarded for the purchase of a new street sweeper, as well as three years' operation, including labor, for that piece of equipment. I don't believe the funds have been released, but again, we want to make sure that we have the placeholder to take advantage of that grant. So, that concludes my comments. The recommendation is that you do adopt the ordinance amending the 2018 budget, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about any of the details within the proposed amendments.
I would move adoption of the ordinance amending the 2018 budget.
Second. I just want to make a quick clarification. When I introduced this, I called it Ordinance 1531, which I have on my paper agenda, but if you look online, and I'm pretty sure it's correct, it says Ordinance 1532, since we already have a Ordinance 1531. So, this would be adopting Ordinance 1532, amending the 2018 budget. So, is there a motion and a second?
Yeah, and I second.
Second. Is there any discussion?
So, just for clarification, it seems on the surface that we're doing this a little early. This is September, but I'm imagining that you, we want to do this now so that you can accurately prepare next year's budget over the fourth quarter. Is that correct?
Absolutely correct.
Do we have an idea of what the total budget amendment amount is on this, and are we mostly just taking it out of cash reserves? Is that what's happening?
That's correct. I don't have a total offhand. It's probably in the 3 million range, just kind of an eyeball check, but yeah, it's primarily reserves, and there are reserves that are available for this. And, you know, some of these are carryover as well, so.
Yeah. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, it's been moved and seconded to adopt Ordinance Number 1532, amending the 2018 budget. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
All right. Thank you.
So, next up is the City Managers' Report.
So, Honorable Mayor and City Council, this is actually a great example of the new policy in the future. These will be addressed, except for the first one. But the first one, actually, I'll just do this. The first three interlocal or MOUs are going to be taken by Police Chief Dussie Pierpoint, one related to internet crimes against children's one related to Internet Crimes Against Children's Task Force MOU, another one with the Washington State Patrol regarding criminal backgrounds, and then another one with Department License Agreement on Driver and License Plate Information. And I'll hand that over to Police Chief.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm glad I could be Exhibit A for the need for a new process. I do have, I'll start with the Washington State Internet Crimes Against Children's Task Force. This is actually a new interlocal or an agreement or contract, if you will. Shown, a detective that I have in the department has shown interest in being part of this task force. These types of crimes can be very difficult to investigate, so it is a benefit that we have someone interested. Being part of this task force will open up doors for training, as well as the ability to work with other members throughout the state and/or nation. And as we know, internet crimes can travel all over, and there's already cases being referred, so, for your consideration.
Can I get a motion?
Move to approve Lacey Police Department's participation in the Washington State Internet Crimes Against Children's Task Force, and authorize the city manager to sign the corresponding memorandum of understanding.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Well, I think this is related, Chief, to a heads-up you gave me a week or so ago about more focus on, special focus on internet crimes for children, or not, but it does associate it with the fight against human trafficking in this sense, for sure, right?
It can all be interconnected, absolutely.
So I appreciate very much the leadership to take this on officially in that realm. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Next, we have an MOU with the Washington State Patrol.
Just a second, I need to call for the vote. It's been moved and seconded. We've had some discussion. All in favor of the motion to approve this MOU and the participation in the Washington State Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries.
I'm not used to having more than one on the agenda.
It's okay, it's the first one like this.
Why we need a new process.
Thank you, Mayor. The next one will be a MOU with the Washington State Patrol for criminal records checks, and this is something that we've already had. This is just an ongoing MOU. Something was updated or changed, and we need to update.
I make a motion to approve Washington State Patrol memorandum of understanding regarding criminal history backgrounds, and authorize the city manager to sign the agreement.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that motion carries. And last but not least?
Thank you. The next document that we have is with Department of Licensing, and that is for online searches for drivers and license plate information. My understanding is they have a new system, therefore they're asking for updated documents with all the agencies that access that.
So is there, can I get a motion?
I make a motion to approve participation in the Western Washington Department Licensing Agency Access Service, and authorize the city manager to sign the corresponding agreement.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that motion carries as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we have one final agreement, which is with North Thurston Public School, actually, excuse me, Tumwater School District, and Parks Director Jennifer Burridge will provide that report.
So thank you, Mayor Ryder, and members of the council. Glad I could be Exhibit B for a new policy procedure. Before you tonight is a Tumwater School District pool use contract for September 2018 through August 2020. The recommendation is to approve the agreement and authorize the city manager to sign the agreement. This agreement goes hand-in-hand with the joint use agreement between North Thurston Public Schools and the city of Lacey that you had approved at the last council meeting, and allows Tumwater School District use of River Ridge Pool for their girls' high school swim and dive program. So it provides revenue source to the city's budget and provides a needed facility for the programs for Tumwater School District. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Can I get a motion?
Move to approve the 2018-2020 Tumwater School District Pool Use Agreement, and authorize the city manager to sign the agreement.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, discussion? So we're the fiscal agent for this? Is that why this is coming through us, not through North Thurston Public Schools?
Yeah, so we, we have an agreement with North Thurston Public Schools that we, we schedule all the pool space after the school use is done, and, yeah, and we pay a hundred and five thousand dollars, but part of that is us bringing in this sixteen thousand two hundred and ninety from Tumwater School District. So it's actually, it's, goes hand-in-hand with the other agreement.
Got it. Great.
It's true that you can even, sometimes you can rent the pool overnight, right? And isn't there a program for that, or there used to be?
There, maybe, I'm not aware of that. You mean like a, just a special school activity?
School activity or whatever?
Party group. We do rent it out for private use. I haven't heard in almost two years that I've been here of an overnighter, but it sounds like you have.
So it's been moved and seconded to approve the 2018-2020 Tumwater School District Pool Use Agreement. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that motion carries as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. So now we're on to our standing in general committees. I'm going to have to turn this over, both of these, to Lenny, Councilman.
Although I don't cheer either of these, I'll give both reports. They're both really short now, though, because we've covered almost all of it here tonight already. So the Finance and Economic Development Committee met on August 28th, and the only thing on the agenda that we haven't already covered tonight was the mid-year financials. Really, nothing out of, nothing unexpected. The expenditures are at twenty-three million four hundred and fifty thousand seven eighty-five, forty-nine point three percent of the budget, so halfway through the year, we're at halfway through the expenses, and revenue at twenty-seven million six forty-one, six hundred and forty-one thousand seven thirty-one, which is fifty-eight point two percent of the budgeted revenue. And really, that's the entire report, because we've covered everything else tonight. Anything you want to add on that, Troy?
No, you're correct. I mean, things are coming in as expected. I will note that revenues are a little bit higher, and mainly due to development that's occurring, especially on the commercial and multifamily end, which is kind of a change from what we've seen in the last ten years or so, so refreshing to see that.
Thank you. And then general government also met on August 28th. We actually had a six-item agenda. Five of those items have been covered tonight, so again, there's only one item to, to report on, and that is, so we heard from several members of the committee that's been formed in support of inner-city transit's proposition for, Proposition One, I believe it is, for the, the tax that will be placed on the November ballot. It's a four-tenths of a penny sales tax that'll be on the ballot for the people to decide on. The resolution of support that they were seeking was not moved to the full council, as the motion did not get a second, and that is my report.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Since there was no consensus coming out of the committee, I'd like to offer a motion to direct our city attorney and staff to prepare a resolution of support for the inner-city transit ballot proposal, and have it ready for full council consideration at our September 27th meeting.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, discussion? Councilman?
I will say the same thing I say every time we get one of these ideas for a resolution to come before us. As I've said all along, I think it's inappropriate for us, as an elected body, to come out and in support or against anything that's going to go on the ballot for the people to decide. I think individually, it's perfectly acceptable for us to support or not support whatever we might, you know, however we might feel about any particular issue, but because this is going on a ballot, I think it's completely inappropriate for us to even discuss it, and therefore I will abstain from that vote.
Yeah, just briefly, Mr. Mayor, I would say because of the recent improvement to services in northeast Lacey, even though it's, wasn't exactly what we wanted, we would have loved to see it reach all of Hawks Prairie and make the loop back to Marvin Road, and with the addition of Councilmember Cox on there being a great advocate and making at least that happen, I would support this tonight. And a lot of the reason is, this resolution would be drafted, and that would create discussion at the next board meeting, because there would be a vote on it, of course, and I think any, any information that the voters can get from now till ballot time to decide whether they want this or not, and whether it's important to them or not, it only benefits them, and for that, I will support this tonight.
Actually, Councilmember Hearn, you have a?
Oh, yeah, this is political. I actually agree with part of your statements, Councilmember Steadman, about more information, so I think this could be a great forum for items that are going to the ballot, where we had pro and con, like we did for the other one a couple weeks ago, but I'm going to vote no to put it, to make a resolution, because I think the council should just stay out of the politics of items that are going to the voters, so I'll, I'll say no to this one.
So.
Just want to make a quick correction.
Real quick.
Yeah, it's just a correction to what I said. I kind of got my vote backwards. We're only voting now on whether or not to form the ordinance, so I would vote no on this, on the resolution. I will not abstain.
Okay. Councilmember?
All right. The reason I decided to put this forward, and the reason I feel so very strongly about it, is since inner-city transit had to make deep cuts after the recession, Lacey has really had the short end of the stick. With the service changes that are coming later this month, we're getting a little bit, as Michael acknowledged, and we will get service, that at least we'll get to some of the, the business sectors. Lacey stands to benefit more than any other community. If this measure passes, we will get service that will go all the way up to north Lacey, that will cover our entire city limits. There are businesses that are, where people are charged sales tax that are within the city of Lacey and within the benefit, transportation benefit area, that do not get the benefit of transportation. So it is, I think it's, I think it's a good move on the part of this council, since we will, our citizens will stand, and employers, employees, staff will stand to benefit so much that we take leadership on this and come out in favor of a resolution when it comes, if, if we vote tonight to move this through.
And I'll remind the council, what this will do is, at the, our next council meeting, it will afford the members of the public who are in support of this to speak, and members of the public who are against to speak, so it will provide more information to our public regardless, and so, as you've pointed out, and it's been pointed out, I think more information on this issue, the better, so I'll, I'll be supporting this measure as well.
So, again, that'd be, that'd be great to have the forum. I wish we could have the forum without going in, making a political statement as a council. And also, for clarification, government did not endorse this, too? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank, thank you.
So it's been moved and seconded to direct the staff to bring forward a resolution of support of inner-city transit's Proposition One, asking the, asking the voters in the district for a four-tenths of one percent increase in local sales tax.
I have a question. Was there, was the full committee at that meeting? I'm not on that committee.
So, no, the reason why, well, no, the reason why.
Was a quorum.
There was a quorum, but I was out of the country at the time, and so there wasn't, there's only two people at general government, and so there wasn't a majority of the two people at, at the meeting. So that's why there wasn't a recommendation.
So a follow-up question, if there was a full committee, in your opinion, do you think?
That's a real, that, that meeting is closed, man.
I think, I think at this, at this point, it's irregardless, because there's a motion on the floor.
It's a good question, but, I mean, I don't need an answer. I already know the answer.
There's a motion, there's a motion on the floor. It's been moved and seconded, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All against?
Opposed.
The motion carries. Thank you. So is that the end of your report? Yep. So next up is Boards, Commission, and Committee Reports. I'm first. The Mayor's Forum met last Friday, and we met in Tonino, great city of Tonino, and a lot of the conversations that we're, seem to be having around the Mayor's Forums is about homelessness and housing, affordable housing, and of course, we get to hear from the Mayor of Olympia of everything they're dealing with in Olympia, and the Mayor of Yelm talked about an ordinance that they have actually brought forward, and he found out during that discussion at the Mayor's Forum, that a week ago Tuesday, there is a Ninth Circuit Court judgment that will now put their ordinance really in jeopardy. They were going to restrict people who are homeless from, from being on, on public property. The Ninth Circuit Court's decision said that unless a city has beds available, you cannot restrict anyone who's homeless from being on public property. So this is going to have a major impact on every city. This is the decision that really came down from an Idaho decision, that was, out of Idaho, that worked its all the way, worked itself all the way through, so that has changed a lot. It changed a lot. The city of Olympia was planning on going through and cleaning up a couple camps that were on public property. They had to stop, pull back from that. Now the Yelm's ordinance is in major jeopardy, and of course, we've had conversations on this council about camping ordinances, which was now somewhat of a mute point. The other thing that the Circuit Court decision said is that every jurisdiction is now responsible for their own population as well, so the, the ability to transport homelessness, homeless individuals in your community to other communities is now, there's a legal question about that as well.
Does that mean you can't?
Sounds to me like that would mean that we can't use, for instance, the beds that might be available in Olympia to offset that ability.
That's what, that's what.
Salvation Army, if it has empty beds.
Yeah, that's what, that's what Mayor Selby says is the good thing that's coming out of this. I don't know, that's a bigger discussion, so it's.
I guess that depends on where you sit.
I guess where. Exactly, exactly. And so it's, it's a big, this is a big deal. I mean, it's a major change, too.
There's probably not time to answer all these questions, and maybe you can't, but it sounds like you've studied it, and haven't, but it's a question that immediately comes to my mind is, you know, what is a bed? Is a, is a camping mat a bed, or is a bed a shelter? And then available beds, does that mean they're hotels or have to be completely booked in order for them not to be housed? And then, you know, there's lots of questions like that. And then, and the third question I had on that is, is because someone is residing homeless in Lacey, does that make them a citizen of Lacey?
I will refer to our legal counsel on some of those questions.
I think those are all great questions, and I think there's probably going to be discussion in the future covering a lot of those. I don't think, I will say that hotel, available hotel beds are not going to cover.
Probably doesn't cover it.
No, I wouldn't think so.
So as you can, as you can imagine, that took the majority of our conversation at the Mayor's Forum, and so that's my report for the Mayor's Forum. It's a big one, and there, I know we're going to have some more conversation, some work sessions, and we'll be reporting out about some of the progress that we've been making on our end on this issue, some possible legislation change for the state of Washington that we're going to be discussing on this council. There's, so there's a lot, there's a lot of things that we're, we're working on to, to address, address this, so. So my other committee meeting was the Transportation Policy Board, which met yesterday morning, bright and early at 7:00 a.m. It was kind of a light agenda as well. There's really two just major items that were discussed. The first was the 2018 to 2022, or 2019 to 2021, I guess, Regional Transportation Improvement Program, the RTIP, which is known, and these are the, the major funded or major projects that have to be on the RTIP to go forward. There was just a presentation about that, and a recommendation to forward on the full Thurston Regional Planning Council for approval. The other item that was discussed in length was the inner-city transit, not the proposition, but really the, the background information which led them, led the authority to put the proposition on the ballot in November. And it, I think the one thing that really stood out for me during, during the presentation was that the, the maj- stood out for me during, during the presentation was that the, the majority of the projected deficits that intercity transit is facing going forward is because the federal government has reduced their locals, authorities, transit authorities purchasing of their buses, right? They, it used to be an 80/20 split, now it's down to 20% their funding currently, is from what I got, and so, buses are very expensive, and so, at some point, those buses need to replace, and so, if you look out in the out years, if they don't receive that money, there's huge deficits. The thing that was interesting to me is, they, they do believe that, even the authority believes at some point that, that level of federal involvement is gonna come from 20% back up to 50%, even their own projections, and so, really, all the rejected deficit is a 30% reduction in bus purchases, is, is the reason why the majority of the deficits in the out years is happening. It goes, goes shows you how expensive these buses are, and so, I think that was the, really the, the only, I've seen this presentation, this council's seen the presentation quite, it's a great presentation, they do a great job. It's the, really the first time that has really cut up to me that what is really causing the major deficits in the out year is a 30% reduction in support from the federal government on bus purchases. So, that's, basically, we spent the majority of the time at the TBB talking about that, and that is my report. Next up is Councilmember Young.
Hi. So, the EDC took the summer off. We haven't met yet, but we have a meeting in a couple of weeks. Now, I'll go ahead and do the Thurston Thrives report. So, Thurston Thrives hosted a regional housing summit, and this is the second housing summit they've hosted. The purpose of this was to continue engagement on affordable housing solutions and encourage more regional collaboration. There was Ted Keller from the Washington State Department gave an informative slide presentation. Some of the takeaways were a little bit surprising. He said the opioid crisis is not directly correlated to the rise of homelessness in Washington, according to his data, and he presented a slide that showed that the opioid crisis in this state flattened, while the rise in homelessness actually rose during the same period. But the data showed that the rise, rise in home prices mirrored the rise in homelessness in the state, and he concluded that our state needs more affordable housing units as a tool to combat homelessness. And then, there was a presentation by Zach Kusturus of Prime Locations. He stated that our population growth in Thurston County requires the region to build 2,000 units per year, and in reality, the region is underbuilding by 600 units per year, causing vacancy rates to drop and home prices to climb. And then, Zach presented a model which demonstrated what it takes to build a multifamily housing project, and the challenges developers confront with financing and the minimum thresholds necessary to make a project successful. And then, he stated there is room for public-private partnerships to help address the affordable housing crisis. So, then we broke up into small groups, and we had facilitated discussions and came up with some potential ideas in each group, and then we shared our ideas to the whole group. Some of these ideas were to expedite the permitting process, to have more flexible property and sales tax, to mitigate fees, some of these things Lacey is already doing, changing zoning to increased density, using unutilized government land for affordable housing, promoting trade jobs, and local affordable housing investors network. I think that our city council needs to have a work session to discuss these ideas and how we can help even more than we already are to help increase the supply of affordable housing in Thurston County. So, that's my report on Thurston Thrives, and then the CIP met, oh, yes.
I just wanna say, that was, that meeting was one of the best I've seen as far as interjurisdictional work group of all of the cities coming together, all the jurisdictions, with the private sector, with the nonprofits. That was actually a, a very functional meeting. I thought there was a lot of great ideas. Zach in particular had some ideas that I think could be beneficial to all of us, so really good meeting. They did a great job.
I agree. Hoping we can have a work session soon to talk about all of that. Then, the CIP met this past Monday. We were given a proposal by the United Way. They want to administer the grant process for the Health and Human Services Committee. The proposal would allow for United Way to distribute, manage, score, and vet the RFP applications, and perform site visits, train community partners on results-based accountability, administer the funds on a monthly basis to the grant recipients, and collect data quarterly from funded partners and report back to the HHSC with this data. The cost of administration that they would charge us is 10% of the annual HHSC allocation, which is the same cost the county is currently charging us. We didn't have a quorum at the CIP, so it was informational only, and we couldn't vote. However, there was general support for switching to the United Way process after our current three-year cycle ends in one year. We also reviewed a letter that the CIP had received from Trudy Sukup of Homes First. She requested information about housing dollars that have not yet been awarded. We approved a draft letter response letting her know that the CIP did not have any role in reviewing or providing funding for any housing-related applications this year, and we forwarded her letter to Commissioner Bud Blake. The CIP will meet again on October 8th and hopefully make a formal decision regarding United Way proposal to administer the HHSC dollars. And then, lastly, I covered LOT, I believe that was last night, for Cynthia. It was my first time going to a LOT meeting, and is extremely fascinating and educational. So, last night, the draft budget and capital improvements plan was approved for public review. There will be a public hearing, and the information will be available on the LOT website. The document includes detail on LOT's net operating budget, capital budget, and debt service. The capital improvement plan portion of the document summarizes capital projects planned for all the way from 2019 to 2024, and it lists projects anticipated for 2025 to 2039. At the work session before the business meeting, we received a planning update from Director Mark Strub. The update included information about solids management, security adaptations, reclaimed water strategy, and property acquisition. I won't get into all of that, but regarding LOT's solid waste management, they're having issues with receiving too much hauled waste at one time. They would like jurisdictions that deliver hauled waste, Lacey being one of them, to spread out their schedule throughout the year instead of delivering all their large tank waste in summer months only. Apparently, they had a meeting already before last night's board meeting, and it was figured out that they would do such as that, so that's good. And then, regarding security adaptations, LOT will be installing a perimeter fence along Franklin Street that is taller and prevents camp, oh, what was that? Oh, sure, go ahead, sorry.
I just wanna say that there's been excellent communication between the city of Lacey and LOT in regards to our step discharge for several years. At the operational level, LOT knows when we're discharging, how much we're discharging, you know, we work with them in order to eliminate any complexities to their treatment. So, I think there may be a misunderstanding a lot between the operational folks who actually do the work versus the executive director's opinion, but I just wanna make it clear to you that, that there is excellent communication that goes on at the operational level to prevent solid oversight.
And you had a meeting with them yesterday? Were you there yesterday?
Well, the deputy mayor, myself, and Roger Dickinson, who runs our program, met on Tuesday, so that the deputy mayor, you know, understood what we did, and then Roger Dickinson met with LOT about an hour after our meeting with the deputy mayor. And I don't know why, there seems to be a disconnect in communication between the operational level and, and the executive level, but I just wanted to make it very clear that we don't just roll down the road fat, dumb, and happy, discharging anywhere we want, whenever we want.
I don't think they were insinuating that at all, just so you know, they were not insinuating that. They were just saying that it's problematic from their end, and they're asking for some changes.
Yeah, the, the thing is, is that we are not causing problems for them. There is excellent communication that goes on between us and them, so for them to say that we are causing them problems in any way, shape, or form is incorrect. So, sorry, I'm a little bit. It, it means a lot to me, because this has been going on for a long time. So, I just wanna make that very clear.
I think in summary, Scott is very passionate, and I would support him. We do communicate very well with LOT.
When, when he talks about the operational side, I've seen it many, many times. I've taken many, many tours of the facility, and the guys doing these jobs, and they're, and the men and women that do this job, do those jobs, and they're very professional, they're very, they, they know exactly what they're doing, and so, I have to agree with you. Must be a disconnect.
Roger Dickinson showed the deputy mayor the spreadsheets that we send a lot.
I took those with me last night, by the way.
And, and so, the thing is, there are, you know, solids discharges from Lacey, from Olympia, from Tom Water, and also private haulers, and it's really the, the ones that make the issue are the private haulers who are discharging right at the plant. So, all I can say is...
We got it.
We communicate well.
So, while we're on the, are you done with LOT? Are you still going?
No.
Oh, well, please, 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 please continue.
Real quick, okay. They're putting a perimeter fence because they've had a lot of camping, and they're shrubbery, and they're implementing some new security measures because of all the homeless people around their facility. And then, they're gonna be having a meeting next week about sea level rise, and the Olympia City Council, Port Commission, and LOT Board will all be there to make a plan of action for how to prevent sea level rise problems. That's my report.
Okay, and so, one last thing that I wanna report out to this council, just so you're all in the loop. LOT, the LOT Board sent a letter to the city of Olympia talking about some of the issues they're having with homelessness, and that's the reason why they talked about the, the fence. And basically, the, the gist of it was, LOT was encouraging the city of Olympia to have some sort of a, a managed camps, so to get those individuals who are, are posing a, a safety hazard, and obviously, operational hazards for LOT. I received a, an email back from a, a council member from Olympia, basically, and the, and the letter that went back to LOT and we got a copy of, basically, said that LOT should come to the table with some solutions and so on and so forth, and they should be a part of overall, if they're gonna talk about these issues, they should put together some solutions. I, I wrote back, and I want the council to know what I wrote back to this, and this was before the Mayor's Forum, and I said I would be discussing the, the letters with Mayor Selby at the, the Mayor's Forum, but I was a little surprised that the city of Olympia is somehow upset with LOT for bringing up safety concerns and not offers, offering solutions, because LOT's mission is wastewater treatment, and any resources spent outside of their mission, in my opinion, would be inappropriate. I agree that the homelessness is at a critical level, and jurisdictions do need to work together to implement effective solutions on this issue, but LOT asking for managed camps so they can continue their mission doesn't seem inappropriate under the circumstance. And so, I, I sent that letter back. I want the council to know exactly what I wrote, so...
I would just add, I, I appreciate that, that I agree with your position on that completely. It's, that is a jurisdiction, Lacey, Tom Water, Olympia, it's all of us have that issue to deal with. It is not an issue LOT should deal with. LOT has a function, their function is wastewater. That's the function they should do, and because they happen to be located in the city of Olympia, it's Olympia's responsibility to give them the security that's necessarily like they would any other agency or business.
So, thank you, and I just wanted to make sure the council knew where I was at on that, because I didn't send it off to the full council, because I didn't want the whole quorum issue. And thank you, Scott, for correcting and for your passion on that issue.
It is refreshing to see executive level people defend workers when they do a great job. You don't find that a lot, not, you know, even in the Marine Corps when I served, there's certain officers that didn't represent or, or go to bat for the NCO ranks, and there's some that were, and the ones that did were respected when it was warranted. It's not always warranted, but, you know, that's, that's a leadership change, so everybody knows.
So, next up is Councilmember Greenstein.
I have no report tonight. Emergency Medical Services was actually, was to meet today, and the meeting was canceled because of Steve Romine's passing.
Councilmember Hearn.
So, Lodging Tax Advisory Committee meets tomorrow for one of their annual two or three or four meetings. Applications are in and have been reviewed, and we'll be discussing those tomorrow. Looks like a good group this year, looking for spending that money wisely. Olympia and Beyond was here tonight. Shawna, thank you for filling our gallery throughout the whole meeting. Oftentimes, folk jet after their speech, but you stay. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. You're, and your involvement with the city throughout, it's been good. You or one of your other staff members is usually in attendance to one of our meetings. Thank you. Thurston County Coalition Against Trafficking actually outgrew their space for this night, which the city of Lacey normally sponsors, and tonight, they had a special meeting. They were at the Lacey Conference Center, and they supported or presented to hoteliers fighting against trafficking in the hotelier business, and it was extremely well RSVP'd, so they had a good meeting tonight. That's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Stedman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, your Lacey Sessom Chamber, I wasn't able to make because I was at my other committee meeting, and the deputy mayor was there, but I, it was my fault. I didn't get the proper channels connected in time, and she's obviously in Walla Walla, so I'll report on that next time. But the Solid Waste Advisory Committee met at that same exact time, and we had a briefing on the solid waste facilities and capital improvement plan, and basically, in a nutshell, the, the good news is, there's no ask for money. The money's there. The bad news, or, because it's, you're talking about upwards of $30 million. A lot of these facilities are old, and, and the way they sort things and, and deal with, with today's trash and recycles is, wasn't the way they were designed, so they need some attention. Like anything else, it's 30, 40 years old, you have to maintain it and, and stuff like that. But one great thing that came out of this discussion was, and I believe it's Rainier and the facilities in Rainier in Tonino, I believe it is, but Rainier, I know for sure, is, so they, they take their stuff from there, and they bring it up to the transfer center at the WARC, right, the regional place right here in Lacey, and then they, they sort it, and they take it right back down and pass, get on the freeway going down to Centrelia, to the rail stations and, and all this stuff. So, they're essentially making two trips, and the, and the great discussion, the great discussion about it was, why don't we put monies, capital investment into those facilities to where they could stay down there and not have to make the trip up and go right back and pass? You know, it just makes sense, you know, wear and tear on the roads and the freeways and, you know, wasted gas, carbon footprint, you name, you name it, goes on and on. It just made perfect sense, and I love it when things like this are discovered, and it's a no-brainer, and everybody's like, hey, yeah, that makes sense. Let's look into that. So, that's, essentially, that was the biggest thing I got out of the meeting, and when you can make huge steps like that, that save so many resources, it's, you know, it, it makes you feel good. So, that is my report.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Cox.
All righty. In addition to my other goodies, I covered the ORCA, it's the Clean Air Agency, meeting for Deputy Mayor Pratt. I promise not to talk about Microns tonight. But in general, we were hearing more staff reports than anything. They were talking about redoing the penalty worksheets when they go out and do inspections. They're gonna be taking this up for three months. The two worksheets that they dealt with were for outdoor burning and for solid fuel devices, otherwise known as wood burning stoves, and the point of doing this is so that all the penalty forms are standard. It will make things more consistent when you have different inspectors going out and looking. They'll all be playing with the same playbook. It will also require three signatures for a penalty to get issued as well, so it seems like a, a good step forward. The thing that drew the most discussion in that meeting, though, was a conversation... The thing that drew the most discussion in that meeting, though, was a conversation about what's known as an air curtain incinerators. And essentially, these are big old devices in which biomass, mainly wood, stumpage, and all is burned. And there is an outfit called Peninsula's Topsoil in Northeast Mason County that's proposing a permanent one there because they are continually doing this land clearing and they have stumps they need to move. And unfortunately, there is no market for biofuel anymore as there was as recently as, you know, four or five years ago. Staff is very concerned about a permanent thing like this for reasons that, you know, the emissions aren't controlled to levels that meet best available control technology. There's no significant energy recovery. Approval would undermine the agency's own list of prohibited open burning. So, they did allow that perhaps there might be some provision where a mobile unit could come in and do a one-time burn because that is less environmentally harmful because of the nature of these contained things than just to be, have open big slash piles burns. So, there is that. Additionally, Jim Cooper, who's from the Olympia City Council and is Chair of this group, is going to seek a meeting with the State Lands Commissioner and try to come up with an approach on that that would carry over to the other regions on clean air. So, that was, that was the highlight of that meeting, other than we got handed this very grim headline that says, "Deaths from inhalation of wildfire smoke in the United States could double by 2100." Obviously, we had some conversation about the August smoke-in-the-air events, but everybody knows it was smoky in August, so... Okay, on to intercity transit authority. The main things that occurred at our meeting of September 5th were that we adopted the 2017 Annual Report as well as the 2018-2023 Transit Development Plan as presented. Other items were pretty much routine contract approval. Don Melnick of Lacey was reappointed to a second three-year term as Citizen Representative of the Transit Authority, and Don is a former Planning Commissioner for Lacey and resident of Panorama, so we were glad to see he could come back. But we also had some fun at this meeting because we got to do, we got to eat cake and have a celebration that once again, intercity transit's teams are the Washington State Public Transportation Rodeo Grand Champions. So, they did good, their thing. The Community Action Council will meet later this month. There was no August meeting. The Thurston Regional Planning Council meeting, I'm sorry, I just lost my notes on that. Let me come back to it. And then, here we go. I hit a link to a computer website instead of the actual notes on that.
I love technology.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
So, intercity transit is everywhere, and they did a presentation on the public outreach that they've been doing for the road trips there. We looked at the Regional Transportation Improvement Program, thanks to the mayor. And of course, the, as we approved our resolution tonight on the lead entity for the Deschutes Watershed, the council formally authorized Executive Director Mark Daly to enter into this agreement, which I personally think is a great thing because what a shame it is to leave close to a million dollars on the table that could be helping with projects to recover, help with recovering salmon. And lastly, we just had a brief meeting, well, actually, a long meeting by our standards, of the Urban Cities Committee on Housing and Homelessness tonight. Our guest was Crosby Carter, who is the new Director of the Thurston Thrives Organization. And Crosby laid out, you can kind of see some notes on the whiteboard back there, but she laid out her approach as Director, as part of it is to create a strategic plan moving forward to revitalize the coordinating council of Thurston Thrives. And then, we had some more conversation about the cities and the county and how we work together on making sure that the federal and state dollars that come in for housing and homelessness get appropriately directed with the cities having an active voice in that. So, there will be more discussion to come, but it sounds like Crosby's making some interesting forays into giving this group a bigger vision, a more coherent vision, so I'm eager to see what she does with that. And that's my report.
Right. Councilmember Stedman, do you...
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I forgot to touch base on a somewhat local company. When it comes to solid waste, everybody hears me report about China Sword and their refusal to take any recyclings this past year. But being a local business owner, like, there's a few of the, on this council, when you have a supply and everything is supply and demand, so when you have excess supply, like China's not taking a lot of these materials anymore, the business, the private sector steps up in, usually, and at least takes care of some of the problem. And so, I wanted to give a highlight about Northwest Polymers. They're out of Oregon, and they have 50 employees. They're pretty small, but they recycle plastics, anywhere from vinyl to PVC to polypropylene, ABS, et cetera. And, you know, just a quick shout-out that, you know, when government can't or shouldn't be doing something, private sector or service clubs or nonprofits usually take up that slack or a decent percentage of it. And so, it's not all doom and gloom, and good things happen, even though it's a micro level, there's only 50 people, but it can only go up from here, so...
Great. Well, thank you for that. Well, we've reached the end of agenda. I thought this was going to be a much longer meeting, so I'm thankful that we're out here relatively soon. So, without objection, I'll call this meeting adjourned, and as always, keep it classy, Lacey.